Only implemented our FY twenty four maximum gas price approval from you on the second half of FY twenty twenty four. So it only started in January of this year. Chairperson, you see on this diagram that therefore Sasol Gas has been using the FY twenty two maximum gas price throughout FY twenty three on the first half of FY twenty four. And that brings a lot of uncertainty. It's not fair to our customers, but it's seriously prejudicial to us as Sasol Gas. Because as I indicated, both the cost of gas acquisition as well as our trading costs significantly increased. And this has got a significant impact to our financials. That's why Chairperson was saying that we are hoping that in making this FY twenty five maximum gas price application so early, we can restore normality. We can start using the FY twenty five maximum gas price on the first of July this year, which is the beginning of FY twenty five. Chairperson, the second point I want to make is to just remind you and your members that in parallel with this FY twenty five maximum gas price application, we've also applied for an FY twenty three clawback. Chairperson, I've already indicated that throughout FY twenty three, we were using the FY twenty two maximum gas price. And we could not recover most of all the cost of the increases that we were incurring in terms of cost of gas acquisition as well as trading cost. Consequently then, we have applied for an FY twenty three clawback now that we've got our audited financial statements. And we are hoping, Chair, that the regulator will also review this application, consider it, and approve or make a decision on it in time for it to be implemented in the same period as the FY twenty five maximum gas price, which is on the first of July this year. So Chairperson, we thought it's very, very important to highlight the fact that these two applications, much as they are separate, they will be implemented during the same period. Chair, you may ask yourself why we kept them separate? It is simple, we just wanted to make sure that we don't conflate the issues between these two applications. We believe the FY twenty five maximum gas price application is a very simple and straightforward application. It's based on the twenty three maximum gas price methodology that the regulator approved. And we have complied with that methodology. And as you've seen on that discussion paper that was published for public comments, our price is less than ten percent different from what your staff members have calculated. The FY twenty three, we are supporting it with our audited financial statements. And therefore, we felt that it's important to keep it separate so that we don't conflate issues, making it easy for decision making. And we hope that the regulator will consider it in time and for it to be implemented concurrently with the FY twenty five maximum gas price. We thought it's important to disclose this, Chairperson, at the start of our presentation, even though this meeting and this application today, we are focusing on the FY twenty five maximum gas price application. Thank you. Rudy, I'll hand over to you to go through the methodology and how we applied it. I don't know if you want me to continue presenting or you'll take over?
It would be great if you could continue presenting, running the presentation. Mr. Masangana, thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
Chair, thank you very much. And I think we just reiterate here that what we've done in this application is that we followed the methodology that was published early in twenty twenty three. And this application is made for the approval by NERSA of maximum prices that Sasol Gas can implement during the period one July two thousand, twenty twenty four to thirty June twenty twenty five. The maximum gas price that we've applied for comprises the weighted average cost of acquisition of gas for Sasol Gas. To that, Sasol Gas's trading cost is added before profit element equivalent to the five-year average EBITDA of a number of proxy companies as published by NERSA and described in the twenty three methodology is added as a margin. And all of those elements added together results in the maximum gas price that we apply for. At this point, Chair, the underlying acquisition cost data that we would use to determine the price on the first of July is still not available. So what we've done in the application that we presented to the regulator is we've used forecast cost and acquisition cost data for the period one March to thirty one May to determine forecast prices, illustrative national prices for the that would apply on the first of July to demonstrate the basis on which the calculations are done, but also the quarterly adjustment that we apply for in this application and that the regulator approved for the FY twenty four decision that we've also had, that we've already had and implemented. The trading cost calculation is based on the latest forecast for our FY twenty five year in line with the methodology as it's published. In this application, as Mr. Masangana has already stated, we do not include a clawback because we've done FY twenty three separately as that decision was made under a different methodology. The profit component that we add is based on the latest available EBITDA percentage numbers as per the prescribed sources. And they span the period twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. There is one adjustment to the published data that we will describe a little bit later in the presentation. So therefore, what we are doing is we're applying to NERSA for approval of the adjustment mechanism that will enable us to determine the quarterly maximum gas prices for FY twenty five. Could we go to the next slide, please? In order to determine the quarterly prices, the first thing we need to do is determine the weighted average cost of acquisition. Sasol Gas acquires natural gas from the Sasol Panda and Tumana joint venture. This gas is acquired on long-term contracts. The prices adjust quarterly and they adjust with reference to international oil, diesel, high sulfur, fuel oil prices. The South African and US producer price index. And obviously, we need to then convert the US dollar price per gigajoule to the ruling, so that at the ruling exchange rate to determine, you know, the cost on a rand per gigajoule basis. The other source of gas we've got is methane-rich gas, which is also sourced on long-term contracts from Sasol South Africa, which is the owner of the Sasol Secunda facility. That agreement has two volume blocks. The first block is from zero to ten million gigajoules per annum. And the second block is an additional ten million gigajoules above that. The first block adjusts by PPI and the second block adjusts by, you know, changes in the Dubai oil price. And again, those dollar prices are converted to the exchange rate. Sasol undertakes to provide the underlying acquisition cost data to NERSA on a quarterly basis to enable monitoring and confirmation of the adjusted price as determined by Sasol Gas and implemented. The reason we are applying for quarterly adjustments is to try and get the cost of acquisition to the cost that's recovered in the market as administratively possible to ensure closer alignment between, you know, the price that the licensee has to pay to acquire the gas and what is recovered in the market. Just to add to that, the contracts are determined prices on a quarterly basis. So what we do from the two sources of gas, we then lag those quarterly prices that we have to pay that we have to pay to our suppliers of gas by a month to enable the administration. So we are essentially a month out of kilter with the price that's paid, but that's as close as we can get to do it administratively. If we can go to the next slide. The trading cost is determined in terms of the methodology as it's published in the methodology for the approval of tariffs. What we can confirm is that the trading asset values that we calculate are not trended. So they are as per the methodology. We include an element that was also approved in our FY twenty four application for unaccounted-for gas. Unaccounted-for gas in gas systems is a real cost. And it's a cost that is carried by the shipper of gas up to a maximum of two percent, after which it becomes a contractual responsibility of the transporter of the gas. We believe one percent is a good, it may be a tough target, but it's a reasonable target. And it's certainly a target we try and operate our business within. As already said, we don't include a clawback in this application. But this FY twenty five application will see the necessary clawback or give back in our FY twenty seven application when that's made because that enables us to use audited financial data as prescribed by the methodology. If we can go to the next slide, please? The profit companies, the profit components and the proxy companies, we've done an investigation into those. And we looked at the individual companies that form part of the list of companies chosen by NERSA. There is one company in the UGI, which is a holding company, and it has a very small portion of gas trading activity in that company. Fortunately, with publicly available data, and we've been able to recalculate the EBITDA percentage for the gas trading portion of that business, which we've included. And we've included on the same basis as we did for our FY twenty four application. So we can then move to the next slide. In line with the methodology as published, Sasol confirms that five percent discount on the maximum gas price will be applied to traders and resellers. And then I think we can go to the next slide, which is just a short demonstration of how the prices hang together. And again, I just want to confirm that the seventy-four rand twenty six we see on this slide is not what the price will be on the first of July. It is using forecast data to just demonstrate to the regulator the basis that we will use to determine the prices that will apply from the first of July. And that then currently gives us, like I say, on the forecast basis, a seventy-four rand and some cents maximum gas price. Currently, our forecast and what we see in the market is reasonably close together, with the exception of the exchange rate. So we don't believe it will be significantly different to that. Then the next slide, please, Mr. Masangana. Just in terms of, if we look at NERSA's mandate and authority, we believe that there is nothing preventing NERSA from approving this FY twenty five maximum gas price as we applied for it. The application is brought, we can confirm again, in terms of the twenty twenty three methodology with the one variation, which was the EBITDA calculation. You know, this assessment, as we've already stated, the assessment done by the NERSA secretariat in the elements that can be calculated are very close to what we have in the application. And, you know, we just confirm again that the trading cost is included. And we believe it's a good addition and it's good to set a target like that in the approval because that is effectively how the business is managed. So we can then go to the next slide. And then what we are asking for approval for is that the regulator approves the quarterly adjustment mechanism that we've demonstrated in the application, which will enable Sasol Gas to determine the applicable gas prices as they would be implemented on the four quarters that start on the first of July, the first of October, the first of January twenty five, and the first of April twenty twenty five for this period of one July twenty four to thirty June twenty five. We also ask for the inclusion of the trading cost and profit component percentage as we applied for. And again, we confirm that a five percent discount in line with the methodology will be applied. Chair, that is our presentation. And if we could maybe just ask for your indulgence for thirty seconds so we can just, the presentation team that is in our office at Sandton here can just get together so we can then take the questions and respond to those as they come in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You will then indicate to me when you are ready to do so. And I will also just wait for the colleagues before they ask the questions. I would propose that you take a pen and paper and you note the questions and we'll ask all of them. And when you respond, you will decide on how you respond to them. So please give us an indication when you're ready.
We will do so, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We are ready to continue.
Thank you very much. As I indicated, may you please have your pen and paper ready? And I will start with Mr. Mkeze with the questions, if you could just note them and then respond after the last question. Mr. Mkeze?
Thanks, Chairperson, and thanks to all the presenters from Sasol's side. I would just like to understand, with regard to the financial year twenty three clawback, will it now be affected together with this application? Or it will envisage it coming post twenty twenty four, twenty five financial year from their side? Just want to get that clarity. Because at the end of the day, there must be one price that will then include the clawback and what would have been determined during the period. And then that's the first one. Secondly, I would like to understand, in terms of the block, the less than or equal to ten meter million kilojoules per annum, which is block one and then block two, the logic for adjustment differently? Where you've got the PPI for block one and then the Dubai oil price in dollars converted to renns after that? That is the second one. And then the third one is that five percent discount. Just wanted to understand, why not seven, why not ten? If you can just assist there for one to kind of understand this. And then somehow in your comments, there was also like an issue regarding transparency concerns from our sides. Just wanted to understand as to what your, if there are any concerns around that, the way it was crafted, it seemed to suggest a transparency concern. So I just want you to explain that. That is what from your side. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Mkeze. Mr. Bungos?
Thank you, Chairperson, and thanks to all the presenters. I think the questions that are, there's, I think, one that's somehow linked to what Ms. Mkeze has asked. But what I wanted to find out, just to get a sense from Sasol Gas, if they believe that, you know, there is adequate competition in the market, you know, to enable the traders, for instance, and resellers that rely on their supply, you know, to remain profitable? Especially considering that Sasol Gas supplies both the traders and the resellers and also has the ability to sell to the end users. To say, taking that into account, can those resellers and traders, do they believe those resellers and traders can still remain competitive and profitable? And then the other question that I had for the team, I could have misheard. I thought what Rudy had said was that they are applying for the FY twenty two, twenty three clawback to be recovered in the FY twenty seven year. Yet Ms. Masangana had said they were applying for it to be effective in the FY twenty five. So if that can please be clarified. And then the last question really is, I wanted to ask about the five percent discount and to check if, you know, it is adequate. And also, is there a way of ensuring that the price that Sasol sells, for instance, to end users? Directly to end users, what make it difficult for traders and resellers to be profitable? This is related to issues of risks of price undercut. So those were the concerns that I had. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Thank you, Ms. Bungos. Dr. Masangana, may we take this as a first round of questions so that we can really refocus? And I kind of wanted to know from you if you've had also access to the comments that were made by other stakeholders on your application?
Thanks, Chair. We did not have access to the comments that other stakeholders asked. So all we have is the questions that you're asking now. I'll ask JP to start with the first three questions. Then I will come in on the next two and then ask Rudy to finish off on the last one about the FY clawback. Thank you, Chair. Please go ahead, JP.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the first question that I'll deal with is just the FY twenty three clawback application and how that's intended to be applied. First and foremost, we have to clarify that the clawback application for FY twenty three deals only with a clawback of the cost changes that took place in the financial year twenty three. That is for the period from one July twenty twenty two until thirty June twenty twenty three. So that application deals with a clawback for the cost changes that occurred in that time. And as the presenters previously indicated, for that period, obviously Sasol was confined to the price that was approved for the FY twenty two period. And that price continued to be charged up until the end of December of twenty twenty three. That application includes a request for the approval by the regulator to allow Sasol to recover that clawback that is applied for over a twelve-month period from when that application is approved. We launched that application together with the application that's currently before the panel in today's public hearing. And the reason for that is that we think it's in the interest both of the supplier and the customer that we align the implication or the implementation of these two applications. So we envisage a situation where this FY twenty five maximum price is approved by the regulator. The clawback for FY twenty three is also approved by the regulator. And that those two elements will then be shown as separate line items on the invoices for the twelve months in which those two elements apply. Both the maximum price for FY twenty five and then the clawback over that twelve-month period for the twenty three cost. And then obviously, in due course, you know, normality will get back into the system following the upset circumstances and the extraordinary circumstances that played out in FY twenty three. Because once we then get to the next maximum price applications on an annual basis going forward, the clawbacks for the preceding periods would simply be included in those applications. And as Mr. Easternman has also indicated in his presentation, the intention with the quarterly adjustment that is already approved by NERSA in the FY twenty four financial year and for which we are also asking approval in this current application will then serve as a mitigant to try and limit the clawbacks going forward. So that hopefully clarifies the position around the FY twenty three application. And in due course, once the regulator publishes that application, the consultation document, then obviously that application will also follow the public participation process. And hopefully, we can still have a decision by the regulator on both these applications so that we don't delay the implementation any further. The second question that I will also deal with is just the question relating to the different blocks in the purchase agreement in terms of which Sasol Gas purchases the methane-rich gas from the producer in Secunda. So I think the first point that I just want to highlight is that we have to take into account that these are commercial agreements, long-term agreements that were concluded at the time when the natural gas project was implemented. And at that point in time, it was a commercial agreement, just like the long-term supply agreements that we concluded with the supplier in Mozambique. There was also a long-term supply agreement concluded with the facilities in Secunda to purchase that methane-rich gas which Sasol Gas then sells into the market. That was an arms-length commercial negotiation between the parties. And the reason that there are different base prices and different adjustments to the two parts of the contract, namely firstly up to ten petajoules and then above ten petajoules in that contract, had to do with a commercial reality that existed at the time and the basis on which it was possible for the Secunda facility to actually make this gas available to the market and also taking into account the alternative value that that gas would have had within the production process of the facility. And therefore, the first block was, came at a lower base price and only adjusts with a reference to the inflation. And then the second part, which as an alternative value related to products manufactured in the facility obviously is then adjusted with reference to the same drivers, namely crude oil that drives the prices that those alternative products take. These contracts have been in place, as I indicate, for a period of close on twenty years now. And those are long-term contracts that ultimately coincide with the expected life of the gas value chain in which Sasol Gas is participating as a licensed trader. So those are the two questions that I will be dealing with. So I can hand back to Penjile.
Thanks, JP. Chairperson, in terms of the retailer Thanks, JP. Chairperson, in terms of the retailer discount, five percent? And I think, Mr. Mkeze, the question could easily have been, why not two percent? And why not seven percent? The methodology indicates that it has to be a minimum of five percent and we comply with that. Of course, we are under a lot of financial constraints, so unfortunately, we cannot offer more. And of course, it will be illegal for us to offer less, hence the retailer discount of five percent. Do we have transparency concerns in our dealings with NASA? None at all, actually, Chairperson. We're working very, very well with the regulator. I think it was Ms. Bungoson who asked that question, or was it Mr. Mkeze? No, it's Ms. Mkeze still. We work very, very well with the NASA colleagues. We have robust, robust debates and we leave the regulator to make regulatory decisions as they need to. But honestly, the relationship works very well and whenever we need to consult each other, we, we really do. And as I indicated, we consult each other robustly and we debate issues. And they come up with recommendations which they make through your, your structures as the regulator. In terms of adequacy of competition, of course, as, as, as indicated in your own study, which you do, I think, every other year, there is still not enough competition in the market. But I'll allow Rudy to, to go into that. There are resellers and so on that, that are, are currently active in the market. But the South African gas market is, natural gas market is really, really constrained. But the point I want to really emphasize, Chairperson, is the issue around FY twenty-three clawback and FY twenty-five clawbacks. So in this application, or parallel with this application of FY twenty-five maximum gas price application, in parallel with it, we are making the FY twenty-three clawback application, which as I indicated, is a separate application. And as, as JP has indicated, we hope that if the regulator approves it on time, we will apply during FY twenty-five. So the FY twenty-three clawback is a parallel application with this separate, but we hope that we'll implement it at, at the same time as the FY twenty-five maximum gas price. What Rudy was indicating in his application is that obviously we're asking for quarterly adjustments. And if none of, if, if the price we implement is actually out of kilter with the reality on the ground, that will call for either a payback or a clawback by us. And that application will only be made when we've got the audited annual financial statements for FY twenty-five. And it's this FY twenty-five clawback or payback that will be made in FY twenty-seven. I think that's what we meant to say, Chairperson. Rudy, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think maybe just a first comment from my side and then I'll hand to Rudy on the, the adequacy of competition. I think the, 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 the situation on the ground, as, as Pendile has also indicated, with a reference to the assessments that the, the regulator undertakes from time to time, SASSO remains the, the, the major supplier of gas into South Africa and into the downstream market in, in, in South Africa. And as such, the, 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 there's a number of traders in the market that hold trading licenses issued by, by NASA and who also purchase a gas from, from, from SASSO to market into, into the same downstream South African market. So in that space, the, the current situation that we face is that the available gas from the current sources in Mozambique, as well as the available gas that is sourced from the facility in Sekunda, that is a finite amount of gas that is available and that has been allocated from a contractual point of view between end customers as, as well as the traders to which the question refers and to which I've referred as well. In recent times, there's been positive development in situations where some of these traders have also succeeded in obtaining and getting access to additional gas from other sources and in their own right, starting to implement and import small quantities of gas into the market as well. And that obviously is a positive development because that enables also an increased level of gas-on-gas competition. It is very small in the bigger context, but that development is, is positive. From a pricing point of view, obviously, the twenty-twenty-three maximum price methodology adopted by NASA applies to these other traders as well. And therefore, in that space, the, the same type of cost-plus type of approach enables the traders to, to achieve a, 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 a return on the gas sales that they are making into the market. So from that point of view, there, there is definitely robust competition between, between the, the players, including SASSO as a trader in that market. I don't know, Rudy, if you want to add anything?
Okay, okay. Chairperson, thanks. We take it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Masangan. I think that, that, there's a, there's a question that Mr. Mr. Mkeze had asked around the transparency. And he had said that there are no concerns, but I, I think that in one of our documents, there's an indication that maybe you have transparency, you have concerns around the transparency of how we exercise our discretion in the decisions and, and we just wanted to clear that.
Chairperson, I'm with my colleagues here and to none of us does that come to mind. Please do allow us to give you feedback to that in writing. And if you can, please point out to us where that is indicated. We have no issues at all with the decision-making process of the regulator. As I indicate, even prior to the decisions or recommendations being drafted by the technical team, they do engage with us and we know areas where we differ. And therefore, most of the decisions don't even surprise us, even when we differ. And we understand the rationale of where the regulator comes from. So there are no concerns at all. So please do indicate to us where that is written and we shall respond in writing, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Masangan. Dr. Masangan, may you please just hang in there? I want to check with the members if there are follow-up questions or additional questions. Mr. Mkeze, any additional questions?
Chairperson, it's not necessarily an additional question, but it's just to say that with regard to the block one and block two, as JP in his response says, that the commercial reality that existed at that time justified this kind of, of, of an arrangement. I think it will, it will, it will help maybe to engage on, on the fundamentals that, that inform that. Because the, the, there could be a slight shift of the reality that existed then to the reality that exists now. And they need to, to kind of deal with issues in a, in an optimal manner. But I do appreciate that this is not necessarily for, may not necessarily be for public consumption in terms of respecting the confidentiality around these matters. So I will, I will just open that door that we, we, we deal with those fundamentals. And, 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 and secondly, the, the, the challenge, but maybe something that we need to, to still think about in-house, is the challenge of going ahead with this was the, the, the clawback application, which for me is something that if, the question is, if it should, it should await this clawback to be finalized for it to be effective in the, in the financial year twenty-four, twenty-five? You know, otherwise we'll have to, to, to delete it. It's just that the timing, I'm not so sure what, what is the anticipation that if, if there are any delays, we proceed? Or we should put breaks and, and have them run concurrently? Because the, the, the other players would like to, to, to get the, the actual price, which will include the clawback. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mkeze. Ms. Bungoson, from your side, any follow-up or additional?
Thank you, Chairperson. There is no follow-up from my side. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Masangan, may you, I, I'm sure, I'm sure, I think the first part around the, the, the two blocks of Mr. Mkeze is saying that it's something that needs further engagement, not, I mean, to reevaluate the, 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 the commercial realities that existed then. And I think you can deal with the second part as well.
Thanks, Chair. I think in relation to, to, to that, these are historic contracts with a certain tenure, but we're happy to engage with the regulator on a confidential basis around the concerns that Mr. Mkeze is raising. Let me ask JP to comment on the FY twenty-three application and Mr. Mkeze's concern. I think it's more a query of whether we should await for, for the FY twenty-three clawback to be finalized before we finalize the FY twenty-five maximum gas price application. But as I indicated, Chair, in my opening remarks, SASSO gas feels strongly that these are two separate applications, that nothing in law stops the regulator from making one application separate from the other. In any case, even when we invoice our customers, these are separate line items. And, and, and we feel that, Chairperson, we've taken the pain of these cost increases for a very, very long time. And as SASSO guess, this for us is seriously, seriously prejudicial. And I hope that the regulator will agree with us in that, that treat the two applications separately and hopefully conclude them both. There is still enough time, in our view, for both of them to be concluded in time for implementation on the first of July of twenty-twenty-four. We are still at least four months away, I think, from that date. JP, I don't know if you want to add from a legal basis?
No, no, I think you've, you've covered it. I can just reiterate that obviously it's, it's two distinct applications which are before the, the regulator. And from a, from a timing point of view, we endeavor to, to do them in parallel. They were submitted in a similar, similar timeline from, from the applicant's point of view. But we do understand that there is robust evaluation of each application from the regulator's side. There has also subsequently been very productive and robust engagements between the applicant and the, and the, the secretariat of the regulator on that application. And in due course, that application will move forward into the public participation phase as well. And as, as Pendile has indicated, there is sufficient time left to, to basically get to a point where both of these applications are dealt with properly before the, the commencement of the next financial year. And then the last comment again, just to reiterate, is that as far as the invoicing is concerned, these line items will be clearly depicted as separate lines to the customer to make sure that there is complete transparency as to exactly what the different charge elements are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, JP. Colleagues, unless there are additional questions, I'd like to give SASSO an opportunity to, to, to round up or if they have any final comments before we adjourn and consider the, the application in totality. SASSO, any closing remarks or additional inputs that you would want to make?
Chairperson, it only remains for us to thank the regulator for giving us this opportunity to present on our application. And secondly, for the speed with which you've handled the application. And Chair, we really plead with you and your secretariat to please send us the comment that you, 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 you referred to, where there was an indication, where you are saying there's an indication that we are concerned about the transparency because we are not concerned at all, SASSO guess. Thank you very much and will respond accordingly to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Masangan. And may I also thank the rest of your team for your presentation. We are at the end of this. There are no additional presenters that have come through during this hearing. And therefore, we are going to adjourn this public hearing. I just want to request the NASA people to not drop off whilst, when we have closed the hearing. And as you have indicated, Dr. Masangan, we are aware of what is required of the regulator. And in as far as the processes are concerned, I think we have followed all of the processes that are required, which I started with, that we must get, we must give those that are affected an opportunity to present facts and evidence. And this then concludes the part of the regulator when it's getting facts and evidence from affected parties. What is left is for us as the regulator to make the decision, having considered everything. Thank you very much. This hearing is adjourned. Thank you. May we just have, when you have that confirmation effect, if we could just take a five-minute break, Mr. Mr. Kize and Ms. Bungoson? And then we can just really round it up. Five minutes, it's, it's nine fifty-seven. So if we can start at, at ten oh five. Thank you.
I'm covered from my side. I just, I'm not so sure if, if, if it's only us here.
No, I, I think that's why I was giving Mr. Mr. Elias Lamine just five minutes to make sure that it's only us because I can still that there's other people who are connected. So, so once Mr. Lamine, let's say at, at ten o'clock, two, three minutes, we can, we can...
Everyone is left, Mr. Pokola. We only have NASA people on the teams.
Thank you. Thank you, Elias.